Yes.
Welcome to the December 1st, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting. Today, we have Dan Chef giving the invocation. Pastor Dan is a pastor at Calvary Church. Welcome Pastor Dan.
Let's pray. Lord, we have the privilege to be grateful. We're grateful for a community. We're grateful for people. We're grateful for resources. We're grateful even for problems. And you keep us sharp by giving us some bumps in the road once in a while. So tonight, I would ask that you would just give this group who lead us, you'd give them wisdom. Their decisions are not always easy to make. Sometimes they involve sort of the lesser of two evils. But I pray that you'll give them discernment, good discernment. Thank you, Lord, also for people who, when they lead us using godly principles and values, we prosper and we're grateful for that. So God thankful for the people in this room. Thank you even for the special celebration that we get to experience. Thank you for life and we're grateful that you're here as well. Give us your wisdom. It's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Dan. Sinda, will you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Frelick?
Present.
Councilmember Osborne?
Present.
Councilmember Gordon?
Present.
Councilmember Brockert?
Present.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis?
Present.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Present.
Thank you Sinda. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the approval to adopt the agenda. Does the council or administration have any items that you'd like to change or pull from the agenda tonight? Here or none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second.
Louis.
And a second by Councilmember Louis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next, we are going to go right into some presentations of lifesaving awards. The first one that we're going to give out is for Corporal Todd Cook and Officer Jacob Elliott. So on July 5th, 2022, Corporal Todd Cook and Officer Jacob Elliott, a two-man car responded to a medical emergency regarding a male who was unconscious and not breathing. Upon arrival, Corporal Cook entered the residence, located the victim, and began CPR. Officer Elliott retrieved the AED from the squad and joined Corporal Cook inside. Corporal Cook continued CPR while Officer Elliott connected the AED to the victim. Officer Elliott delivered a shock to the victim as paramedics from the Muscatine Fire Department were arriving on scene. Paramedics rechecked the victim's pulse and found the male regained pulse. Corporal Cook's and the Officer Elliott's quick action and teamwork have been credited to saving the victim's life. And I'm going to have you two come up and then Mr. Ron, I'll have you come up as well.
Thank you. And I'd have to reiterate the gentleman for the words that come to my mind. My gratitude for these guys and anybody else that joins in the service of our community and basically the people in the community that support him, whatever you mean.
Amen.
Would you be okay with that?
Sure.
Let's have a prayer. There you go. Todd, who is yours?
That's awesome.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. I'm good. Thank you guys.
On August 13th, 2022, Officer Cassie Midah responded to an unknown problem that came in on a 911 line. The caller could only be heard saying, Ryan, wake up. Upon Officer Midah's arrival, she observed a young adult male who was unconscious and not breathing. Officer Midah checked for a pulse and found none. Officer Midah began CPR and continued chest compressions for over a minute. While continuing to reassure the patient, Officer Midah paused to recheck the pulse and found the patient to have a pulse and was now breathing. Officer Midah's quick action and treatment of the victim is credited with saving the victim's life. Officer Midah and Ryan, I'll have you guys both come up.
Thank you very much. Because of your actions that night, I'm able to see tomorrow and am able to continue my work. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'm happy to see you today.
Crystal. I was about to say. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Good. There you go.
All right. Is there anyone present that would like to address an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? So right away. Thanks for coming. Yeah, we can take a second. If anybody would like to leave, you definitely can.
Yeah.
Thank you guys so much for coming.
Stand up, stand up.
You did good.
Thank you.
You made it through.
That is awesome.
This is where five minutes of stand-up comedy.
Why did the chick across?
The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes items nine A through C, items 11A through C, items 13, which are bills totaling $1,589,578.89, and items 14A through B? We have a motion by Councilmember Frelick and a second by Councilmember Louis. All in favor, sign it five by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay. Sorry. Distracted thoughts. A lot of dramatic things going on here tonight.
Motion carries. Motion carries with all ayes.
I'm glad you did that. Because I'm going to do that someday.
All right, now we're going to get right into business. 17A is request to approve the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of $68,607 to Ed Morris of Muscatine for the purchase of a 2023 one-ton truck and dump body for the solid waste division. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Hopkins. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is B, request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to SCP Science in the amount of $35,900 for the purchase of an Easy Probe Optical BOD 300 laboratory instrument. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is C, is request to approve the appointment of Captain Anthony Keys as Muscatine Police Chief upon retirement of Chief Brett Talkington on February 28th of 2023. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hopkins.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Louis. Is there any discussion? With council?
Your honor, we had such a wonderful field of candidates that I'm sure this decision was very, very difficult. But I think we probably chose wisely.
Yes, Councilmember Osborne.
We had three, you know, I'd like to really talk about, we had the three great internal candidates and I think that speaks to Targeton's skills and abilities and building within the team and very strong force. I appreciate that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is D, is request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to higher construction in the amount of $28,500 for the replacement of five intakes on U.S. Highway 61. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Osborne. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is E, is request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to higher construction in the amount of $62,200 for the replacement of eight intakes on Park Avenue from U.S. Highway 61 to Colorado Street. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved Osborne.
We have a motion by Councilmember Osborne and a second by Councilmember Hopkins. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is F, is a request for authorization to proceed with proposed city of Muscatine Indoor Sports Complex. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hopkins.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with council?
So Mayor, do you, we have a presentation, if you'd like us to give it.
Of course.
And I don't know, there may be, if there's, if you want to take public comment on this item or it's up to you really, if you want to do that. We can give our presentation first if you'd like.
Let's do the presentation first and if there's public comment.
So Rich Climes and I are going to provide the presentation tonight. Rich is going to run the slides. I'm going to kick it off here quickly. He'll do great. So as you know, tonight, we're talking about a proposed indoor sports complex. The agenda for tonight, we're going to go over the concept plan for the complex, a little bit about the background of how we came, you know, to this point, to council, and what the primary purpose of the complex would be. We'll go over some direct project costs, operation and O and M costs. We'll talk a little bit about funding, both for the capital project as well as ongoing revenue sources. And then we'll talk a little bit about the project risks and mitigations and then the next steps or project timeline. So direction, we're really looking for a direction from council tonight. The first question for council is, do you have any questions regarding the proposed indoor sports complex? And the second question, the key question, is does city council endorse the concept plan and the use of $600,000 in 2024 bond proceeds for design and construction of the complex? And I would add too, that as part of this, the city is, should the facility be constructed successfully, the city would take on the responsibility of the operation and maintenance of the facility. Okay, so I'll let Rich take it from here.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Appreciate being here tonight and talk about another amazing project that could happen in Muscatine. We have the soccer complex, Kenton Stein Park, our riverfront, our golf course, weed park with the aquador center. This will fit right in line with that type of development, that type of impact for the quality of life in our community. So the next three slides, what I'm going to talk about is the what, the where, and the why. What are we talking about tonight? We're talking about an indoor sports dome that would be an air structure. You can see what it looks like inside. It'd be a full-size synthetic field that would be a regulation 80 by 120 college-level play, but it also would be subdivided down into small fields, mini fields, half-size fields, potentially synthetic turf volleyball courts. Those types of amenities can be in this. Restroom facilities would be included with the project as we develop it. And I'll remind you, tonight, we're just talking about the big picture. There's a lot to vet, there's a lot to discuss, there's a lot of detail. In putting all this together, Parks and Rec staff, Jeff Lindberg, athletic facility supervisor, Nick Gao, superintendent of Parks, community foundation nation, Megan Custis, and Nancy Leek, finance director, and Carol, of course, have all had a part in this, everybody's participation in this, and we've also sought community input in this. So it's not just old Rich standing up here saying, please, please. Okay, everybody? Okay, so where is this going to go? To the right on the picture is the main soccer complex. To the left would be, we call Soccer West. The very top-left corner of the picture would be the American Legion. When we built Soccer West, we built it with the, with the concept that those four spaces, four fields, would be leveled, drained, and rough graded. So in the future, if a synthetic field or a bubble structure was in the plans, the rough grade was already done, the site was already there. Utilities are ready to the site, the parking is to the site. That red square is real close to where the power connection is to the site as well. So everything is kind of footprinted in there when we originally built Soccer West. Please be aware of that. So background and purpose. We know that this winter, we're not going to get any more snow. So this winter is kind of a mute point, right, everybody? Yeah. Dwayne, Councilmember Hopkins, you're looking at me like you're crazy. Yes, we're going to have winter and when there's winter, we need indoor recreation activities. We know that we have a population in our community of child obesity, domestic violence, stress, disadvantaged youth, low-income adults in youth, need an activity base, a place to play, something to look forward to, to go to. In this facility, we would build in time, build in space. Not times at midnight, we're talking prime time, where everybody would have an opportunity to participate in this event, in this activity base. This will expand Muscatine's recreational amenities. I've said that. Generate economic activity through increased sports tourism. If you do some research out there, you'll see youth sports market, youth sports tourism is a huge economic impact for the community.
Rich, can you advance the slide?
I have not done that, have I?
That's okay.
I told you that that slide thing was going to hurt.
No problem, no problem, you were doing great.
Okay, so that's the background, that's the purpose of where we're at, okay? And that, again, this will be a multifaceted facility, not just sports. We're talking car shows, motorcycle shows, craft shows, home and, home and school events there, all kinds of activities. So not just sports, we're talking a meeting spot, a community center, and large-scale for our entire area, not just community, but the region we're talking about. Okay. And with that, Carol will cover this next few slides and then I'll jump back in with some other information.
Okay, so we've spent quite a bit of time putting together the, both the capital cost projections as well as the ongoing operation and maintenance costs. The cost estimate we have for the capital project at this time is $4 million. It's based on a conceptual estimate. So if council determined that we, they would like to move forward with this idea, we would, you know, obviously get more design and get a better, better estimate. But at this time, that's what we're projecting. The city's portion of the capital costs would be $600,000, which would be funded from bond proceeds. And the project, the other funding sources have not all been secured. So there's still some work to do on securing the other funds, funding commitments for the capital costs. A couple of grants that we're applying for, the grant writer, the community grant writer is helping us do that. And all of that basically is in motion. But because the city, this would be built on city property and the city would be accepting the responsibility of operating and maintain it, maintaining it, it's important that council agree to it before we do other work on it. So we're working on all of that. We used quite a few resources. We had a feasibility study that was conducted that told us about the demand in the community for this type of facility. And there were other types of facilities that were included in that study. And that gave us a little bit of an idea of what the cost is and what kind of revenues we could expect from a facility like this. So we sort of started there, but then we did a little bit of research locally. We checked around in the local market as far as what do they charge for facility use? What kind of cost do they have in this area? And then we also worked with our local utility to determine at our rates, what would the cost of the utilities be? So all of that sort of played in. And then our finance director, Nancy Leek, looked at the cost. She costed out, you know, commodities, contractual services, as well as personnel services. So all of that is included in the estimated annual operating budget, which we estimate to be about $280,000. You know, those funds, what we've been, you've been provided with a worksheet that explains the detail of all of that. But, you know, that, Parks and Rec would be the department that would do the operations of the facility. Funding sources, as I mentioned, for capital, design and construction, private donations, approximately a million. Local government funds, which would be $600,000 from the city and we're requesting $400,000 from the county. A Destination Iowa grant for a million and then a local grant for a million too, which would bring us to the $4 million. Revenue sources for the facility itself, we would realize revenue from, just in usage, facility usage. And we estimated the, the revenue from usage based on a utilization rate of the facility. We would basically charge per hour. And at peak times, the, the charge would be more per hour and it would be less on off-peak times. And we've built in a 50% utilization rate. One is because we wanted to budget conservatively initially, but also we want to allow enough time for use of the facility to allow for these local programs to support our community as well. We, we budgeted and put in our costing analysis, the use of $50,000 of hotel motel tax revenue. There's a direct nexus between this type of facility and hotel motel tax revenue. And we estimate we might realize probably at least $30,000 additional dollars in hotel motel tax revenue and it could be more depending on how well we marketed it and those kinds of things. And then there's also some small revenue sources like concessions. We can sell sponsorships or advertising in the facility. So there's some options there where we could, you know, see a little bit of revenue. So in total, we, you know, basically we're showing that we think even budgeting the revenue conservatively, that we could probably make this work. And we did put, I just want council to know, we put a lot of time and energy. Nancy, you know, provided a lot of her insight and input. So I feel pretty good about the estimate. The feasibility study that was conducted, and frankly, just based on my own experience too, that what we'll see as a city, quantitative economic benefits. There'll be direct spending in our community on lodging, food, beverage. We receive tax revenue from that. You know, local option sales tax, it would not go to this facility operation, but it would benefit the city in other ways. We could directly funnel hotel motel tax revenue into the operations of the facility. And then, you know, we'd have some economic benefits here locally just for a one-time construction of the facility. The qualitative benefits and is really why the city would be the appropriate, you know, party to operate and manage it is that it really directly addresses some of council's goals around quality of life. This type of facility often serves as an anchor for revitalization in an area. You see a lot of growth, spin-off development that grows around a facility like this. People come, you know, they, the family might come and play and then the parents come and grandma comes and Aunt Jody comes or whoever may come and they're here spending money and, you know, visiting our hotels. So that's good, it's good for our community. Then people come here and they see that we have a beautiful riverfront and we've got, you know, things going on and they come back. And that's what we want, right, in Muscatine? And then finally, we could really leverage a facility like this to provide some of those community-based programs. That, this is what our, our Parks and Rec department does really well. They offer Parks and Recreation programs that are low to no cost for our community, gymnastics, volleyball. And this would open up a lot of opportunities for us to do more than that. Right now, we, we have to book time with the school district and we just don't have the flexibility because we don't have an indoor facility to have those kinds of programs. So I see a lot of possibility there. There are some risks to the project. Obviously, we don't have all of the capital funding secured. So not, none of, this just, we won't be able to do it without that. But, but also, we won't spend any of the city funds unless we have those commitments. You know, it's possible that we would not see adequate revenue to recover the costs of operation of the facility. And there, there are some options there. We can, you know, we could reduce costs of, costs of operation if we saw reduced revenue, reducing staff hours. You know, different, we have quite a bit of seasonal hours in the budget. So we could reduce some of those things. There's, there are options to explore, put more hotel motel tax revenue toward it. You know, so we would just have to see how it turned out. And then finally, staff recruitment and retention. We have had a heck of a time recruiting seasonal staff. And we'll be talking more about that in budget. But if we weren't able to recruit seasonal staff, you know, we'd have to try to figure out how would we do it with existing staff? How, would we need to reduce hours, those kinds of things? But we have ways to mitigate to those risks to some degree. We can, we want to make sure we adequately market the facility. That's why we have a facility, an event coordinator included in the budget and some marketing dollars to make sure that we get the word out of this facility being here and get people to come here. I think we already have a pretty good reputation for our soccer fields. So we get to leverage that, that's a mitigation, I think. We are, we will tweak the optimal rate structure and operating hours so that we can realize the most benefit that we could out of it. And these folks, the Parks and Rec folks, do this very well. So they, I think they'll be able to manage that so that we can recover as much revenue. So they, I think they'll be able to manage that, so that we can recover as much revenue as possible. And then finally, just realizing that we'll have to dedicate some hotel motel tax revenue to fund operating expenses.
Okay, the estimated project timeline, December. We have the Farley Group, which has given us a general concept plan, we should have the report next week of a site evaluation, what the actual cost will be, how will it really fit onto the site, so we're educated as we go in into writing the plans and specifications and the formal project or program for bid. So January, February, would receive notice from the Iowa Grant Award. Spring, summer of '23, would do the RFP for professional services, and then we would develop the plan, specifications, and so forth. We would use the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission, we would use the community groups to help guide us and steer us, many group meetings there will be, will be in prime season, groups should be available to talk then. Summer of '23, council approves the plans and specifications, we send it out to bid. Spring, summer of '24, we would do in construction, and the autumn/winter of '24, the facility should open. We do know currently, there's about a 40 to 45-week lead time on a dome structure once ordered, so that's why you see quite a lag there as far as opening. So we're about a year and a half out, once we would seek approval on this. Okay, next steps, we request funds from the Muscatine County at the Monday morning meeting December 5th. We submit a Carver Trust grant application by December 5th. Council approval of the Destination Iowa grant at the December 15th meeting. We develop the Destination Iowa grant application by December 31st. We secure private donations prior to submission of the Destination Iowa grant, and if fully funded, we utilize, again, the Park and Rec Commission on formatting and programming for the facility, with a focus on opportunities for everybody in the community, but especially an eye on low-income and disadvantaged youth.
Okay, so, back to the questions. Does city council have questions regarding the proposal? I think everyone that's worked on this is here, we can help with that, and then, do you endorse the concept and the use of the bond proceeds?
Councilmember Osborne.
On the, I'm sorry, I didn't think about this one earlier, so this could be a bit of a sticky one. The hotel motel tax portion of it, roughly speaking, just to do the math easy in my head, we allocate about 100,000 each to the four entities we currently do it at. How would we allocate the 50-ish? Would it be, we take the total motel, hotel tax and divide it by 4.5, or how does that work?
It'd be a flat amount. We would, we would use a flat amount. Is that what you're, it's not a percentage, we would dedicate 50,000 of it.
Okay.
Yeah, so right now, we're outpacing our projections on hotel motel tax revenue, it was really hard to predict because of COVID and all of the other issues in the economy. We had budgeted, I want to say 365,000 last year, I'm looking at Nancy, in hotel motel tax revenue, and I think we had over 500,000.
So then we would take 50 off the top of whatever we get, and then divide the rest by four?
No, no. Nancy, why don't you come up, she can explain it more eloquently than I can.
According to state law, 50% of the hotel motel tax revenue needs to support historic and cultural items, and also support tourism. The city has, from day one, allocated 25% of the hotel motel tax to the art center and 25% to the, to the library. And then from the remaining 50%, the city has funded the CBB, or now the tourism function. Right now, that's a flat, 125,000, and the rest of it was just general revenues to the city. The, with the last fiscal year, and I think some of that was business, staying at business, construction in the community, staying at the hotel, it did come up in it, I think around 580,000 total, so significantly higher than what we had projected. As Carol mentioned, we budgeted about 365,000 this year, based on our first quarter, we had another good July through September quarter. We're comfortable at saying it should be at least 500,000 for the current fiscal year. And so if the percentages, 25% each to library and art center, that'd be 125,000. The tourism, that's a flat amount to the, to the chamber at 125,000 for FY '23, which leaves 125,000 of general revenues. And of that, we're proposing to use the flat amount of 50,000 towards, towards the operations. Should be noted, and it's the timeline though, it won't be in the FY '24 budget that we're doing coming up. It won't open till the following year, but we're pretty comfortable that the hotel motel tax is...
Start talking louder.
That the biggest impact from the pandemic is hopefully behind us now. Some of that may be due with higher room rates even, but, but we're comfortable, based on this last quarter, we just got that, the July through September in, I think, earlier this week, and that was 200,000 for just a quarter or so, and that's probably a big quarter, July through September, but that gives us a little more comfort going forward.
So the, so the slack is really in the general fund, so if we come in 125 for the, I mean, everybody gets their cut, and then 50 comes out of the general fund portion?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so if the general fund ends up, let's say we have a really bad year compared to recent history, it's, say the general fund ends up at 75, and the still gets 50, the 25 is left for the, whatever else that comes up?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Couldn't, just, you know, if we had, for some reason, had a terrible report on the hotel motel tax, and we just had, like, you know, Councilman Osborne was talking about 75,000 and so forth, couldn't council during budget make a choice to reduce the allotment to the indoor sports complex, to make sure that some of the other places that hotel motel tax is supposed to go, or has gone to in the previous years? I mean, are we locked into a 50,000 a year?
No, I don't think so. I think it's, every year, it's, you know, it fits together different ways. I think we're just trying to acknowledge that we, we don't think we can sustain this with just facility revenue, there'll have to be another revenue source, and hotel motel tax is the place to take that from, yeah.
I mean, it'd be a, it's kind of a budget decision, except that we're really talking about headcount at this point, because once you have the headcount, you gotta pay, and you gotta pay the utilities, and there's gonna be fixed cost with it, that whether the people come or not, they're, they're there.
Well, and to go along with that, that's been my concern about this whole thing, I love the concept, I want to do this, but I also don't want to short-sheet our budget session when we come up short in one year, and the general fund, and we don't have the money to meet the obligations we already need. So I think we need to make sure that we have, excuse me, some other source of revenue that we can pull from to, and I would like to see that figured out somehow, I don't know what it is, but whatever it is.
It's sort of a year-to-year thing, I mean, it's hard to predict, it really is.
Here's what I could add, is we have a very, very active community. We have over 150 special events taking place on public property right now. Arguably, we have 200 to 250,000 people coming through the gates of the soccer complex annually. We have almost 350 to 400,000 people coming through the gates of Kentonstein Park annually. That's in warm weather months, everybody. Wouldn't it be cool to capture those people in town, to stay in town? Right now, we have a very intense, active sports community, and in order for sports to be good, you gotta practice. Guess where they're going now to do their indoor practices in a lot of cases?
On a town.
50 miles away. What if we could capture some of those people? We know the numbers are there, we know the special events are there. Capture those individuals to stay right here in town, and bring their teams and their folks into town. So we have a good, not just one year, we're talking 10, 20 years, of a good track record of an amazing utilization rates in our facilities. So I hope that gives you some comfort that it will bring, it will bring people.
And if I could add to that, those, those kids who can't, their parents can't take them to TBK, they can't afford it, they can't get, you know, transportation, you know, we would be unique, and most of these facilities are privately owned. And so to have a, you know, government agency operated in this way allows that kind of access, that would be a unique thing, and I think would be a very, you know, interesting benefit for our community, yeah.
I think it's got a, obviously a huge upside, and I don't mean to drag it down into one little item, I mean, but I just want to go in eyes wide open on, you know, hopefully the best, but you gotta plan for the worst sometimes, at least know what we're going for.
And there will be safety nets, and there will be safety nets built into the budget as well, though, when, if usage is down, then the seasonal staff budgets come down, and there's money, there's money there to do that with. But we just have to prepare for a worse scenario somehow, that's all I'm saying. Sure do. Councilmember Osborne?
I did have one more question that kind of came from public. There were some questions about, you know, baseball diamonds, softball diamonds, I know those things are probably just as easy to put down as, you know, car shows, and maybe a little bit more work than that, but, but things like pickleball courts has been kind of thrown around as well, that would seem like a small-scale thing that might not be for the size of this venue, I mean, this is an event center really, isn't it?
If and when hard courts are included in the, in the concept plans, pickleball will be absolutely an opportunity, especially the senior population, and people will travel here if we put on events to host that, especially if someone sponsors it. As far as baseball, softball games in an air structure like this, absolutely, it's done all the time successfully.
Okay.
Into late evenings, yes.
Would there be, I'm thinking, when I think of the pickleball courts, for example, that might be more of a small-scale, permanent-type thing that would be featured there, or is that something, I mean, we could obviously score, scale it up to a big enough event if something came along, but what's, you know, how many of those are out there?
Yep, so like the golf.
Is there any permanent things like that in the, in the plan?
There is, and so like the golf course, we have multiple revenue streams feeding that enterprise fund. With this air structure, we would do the same thing. There won't be just baseball, just softball, just soccer, just pickleball, just youth sports, it'll be a multiple of revenue streams, to include the craft shows, the home, the home and school shows, or whatever those are out there, I mean, it'd be many, many. Even a little event, it has its place, because that brings people, and that brings opportunity for everybody to participate equally, and that will be, that should be the mission behind this.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Councilmember Lewis?
I just have a couple of things. One concern, as I'm looking at this, I realize this is all, it's like, where are people sitting?
You, most events like this, you'll bring your own chair into the facility, or you'll stand and watch, that's usually how these sporting events are done. Can we, in the concept plan, can we add areas for small bleachers and things like that? Yes, of course we can do that.
The other thing I like is, I didn't know where we were gonna put it, so it was like, I thought, if you were gonna make people walk through the snow and put it way back here, it wouldn't be, so I was very happy to see that it was gonna be close to the, the parking place. The other thing is, what about your arena football?
Dream big, alright.
Coach Lewis, is that what I'm hearing?
I'm just thinking, you know, it's like, it's a close, and it's gonna be big enough, I mean, that's another opportunity.
Here's what I can say to that, almost anything is possible, as long as we protect the infrastructure, right? Almost anything is possible to have down there. And we haven't even talked about the corporate outings, or the large events that need 600, 700 people for seating, we haven't even began to talk about the magnitude of those types of things. So yes, arena football and those types of things is a possibility.
And what about, I just lost my train of thought, did you see the train get off the tracks, sorry about that?
You're probably asking if we're gonna have a Vikings game in there?
Pardon me?
Probably asking if we're gonna have a Vikings game in there?
Oh, please no.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Rich, can you speak to a couple of small items, like turf, for example, bleachers?
Well, it will be, it'll be a sports synthetic turf, it'll have a granular base, whether it be silicone sand or the granular rubber, it'll have the plastic blades, we will have a protective coating going over that when we have other events that would be damaging to that turf. So we can have the car shows, the craft shows, those types of things, the special event things.
So you don't have to mow it?
You do not have to mow it, but you do have to groom it, and our cost estimate does come with a grooming machine to go with it, so we will be able to make sure it's being maintained. This will be a very unique amenity to our community, that will be a very novel thing, it really will. Bleachers, again, when we get into the concept plan, writing the plans and specifications up, we can look at what the room is, what the size needs to be, how much capacity we have for a lot of these items, but we need to take a list of these items, so we have that conversation. Yep.
I remembered what my question was. I can remember up in Davenport, when they had their air dome, it ripped because of too much snow.
It did.
What precautions do we have, or safety net, to make sure that that doesn't happen to ours?
Well, we do know that it's a double-wall system, right? Councilmember Frelick, yes we do. It is a double-wall system, so it is a higher standard bubble that we're looking at, but again, these are questions that we will get into the concept planning and designing that they will answer. We do know we will have some snow removal, snow removal that will need to be done and taken care of. We also know with our insurance, each year will be about 5,300 a year to insure this entire dome structure. Seeing that insurance cost that small, the risk is not that great, is what I'm seeing. You know, if I saw 10, 20,000 insurance, okay, what's going on, right?
And how often would that dome have to be replaced?
It has a life of, I believe, 20 years, and the synthetic surface, if it was outdoors, would be 10 to 12 years. I'm not sure the life of an indoor synthetic surface at this moment, but greater than 12 years.
Okay.
But it depends on how it's maintained, and how it's utilized too.
And is it gonna cause any more added stress to your, your people? I, I just, you know, we've heard over the, the past year of me being in council about how stretched you guys are already. Is this gonna make it so you're more stretched and more, you know, having problems finding resources to help you maintain it?
So will this be a thing that we will have to manage and program, and not have to, we will have the opportunity to serve the citizens at a greater capacity, and that's why we take these jobs, that's why we work for a community to do that. Yes, it will add, but I think we have a plan in place, comfortably a plan in place. Everybody here helped write this plan, everybody had a voice in this, as far as the staffing levels, and we believe we can do that, yes. With the understanding, if this is greater than a 50% utilization, we get up to 75, 80%, that means more revenue are coming in, more hotel motel tax, we would hope to come back and talk at the right time of the year and say, hello, we're back, kind of a deal. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Okay.
Yep, great.
Any other comments?
A couple of, some of my questions have been answered through, you know, discussion we've already had, but, you know, I think we've heard a lot of promotional things about, you know, we have tough winters in Iowa and that kind of thing, and we need an indoor facility, which I, you know, fully support in that type of thing, but I, you know, and then another, you know, really, two people plus to be hired in part-time staff, but this facility is gonna be emphasized for use 12 months a year.
Yes, sir.
And that's what, you know, I just want to make sure that we know that, it's not a winter indoor facility. We want to try to develop this facility gung-ho 12 months a year.
I do believe we will have summer utilization, because one of the biggest trends that we're seeing out there with playgrounds, splash pads, those kind of things, is more shade structures. The sun is causing issues for people and participation levels. This will be an indoor facility out of the sun, so that will be a popular thing.
So there'll be ventilation and so forth, so that even...
There will.
...acceptable for, you know, play on 105-degree day?
I think it'll be air-conditioned.
It will.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
It'll be air-conditioned.
Air-conditioned, okay. I have, you know, I, I think the free use from, like, a economically-challenged family, you know, the scholarship to participate in a program and that kind of thing, but I, you know, the non-quantifiable benefits, number seven. We talk about free access for some, somehow or another designate Muscatine citizens to have a segment a couple times a week, you know, to use the facility free, I think that needs to be a priority with this facility.
And it will be.
And I don't know how that'll be structured, you know, what it is, apart from like, a free scholarship program to be on this team, or whatever might be going on, or that, but just general free use, four hours a week, I don't know what that structure would be, you plan that, but I think it's, okay.
Yep, so the structure now would look like, just again, concept-wise, we would offer open gyms, open times where it's free, coming down, come in and see what's going on, watch. your grandkids, participate yourself. We also have the Kids First Program with United Way that we currently use for our other recreation and parks programs, that if there's a need, they can apply for it, and they're a hundred percent of their fee is paid for. So we will incorporate that into this as well.
Well, you know, dad or mom want to go, they want to go down and, uh, you know, throw the football around, you know, at, uh, just on their own.
Yep, there will be the drop-in.
There's gonna be a
Yep, there will be drop-in.
They can check the, uh, you know, availability schedule and see when they can do that.
Absolutely. How cool is that, right? Go down on a Sunday afternoon after the Vikings win?
Yeah.
What else would you want to do?
Councilmember Osborne, can we get your hand raised?
Uh, just a little more on the upside of this. Um, you talked about it, for lack of a better term, like a marketing person for this, um, which is a great idea. Uh, we got lots of things we can market, uh, beyond this as well. So just, uh, at this time, is it one full-time equivalent just to market this, or would we use it, use that person for other things as well?
Well, the one time, it's, they would do more than just marketing. Go ahead, Rich, yeah.
They would work with the usage groups. They would market. They would recruit. They would handhold and make sure people are having a good experience.
Schedule.
That would be our quality meeting and greeting type of a person. This will be a full-time job to do that. If it's, if people are coming on their own, and when less marketing is needed, we will use this person, can use this person to the other hundred and fifty special events on public property.
Okay.
And think about all those contacts that we can also vacillate those towards year-round now, and not just warm weather, special events.
Yep, that's what I'm hoping to see, is this grows, the marketing of it grows beyond just this part of it.
Sure, sure.
Megan, Jim, would you guys like to?
Angie's got it.
Angie.
Sorry.
Councilmember Lewis?
Sorry.
Your turn?
Council, um, Councilmember Gendrich is gonna probably fall out of his chair, because I'm gonna agree with him, that there does need to be a time period, look at him over there smiling, um, a time period where people that live in Muscatine, and if the county supports it as well, that we can come and actually use the facility free of charge. This is a big money output that I think it's, yes, it's gonna do wonderful for the city, but I want to make sure those of us that are paying our taxes and things like that, that it's like, you know what? This is what it, you know, we pay our taxes, and now we have access to this beautiful dome where we can go exercise, spend time with family, you know, go watch a game, and just have family time. So I totally one hundred percent agree with you.
I agree with you.
There you go. All right. So, thank you.
It'll be interesting to see what that looks like, because, you know, it's set up for a event for the weekend, let's say. And if it's soccer, well, now we got a big green grass field like a park, right? But then we have a car show coming in, and now we've got solid floors set up, and so, in one, in some ways, it's gonna be somewhat unpredictable, but
It'll be okay.
But it's almost like a park that's a little different every day, too.
Yeah. Well, if it's too crowded, that won't be that bad of a problem to have. We'll figure it out.
Megan, Jim, would you guys like to comment at all? I know you've, you both have worked on this, or?
I think, um, main question I was hearing that was giving some objection was, was the reliability of the numbers? Um, the revenue and the cost numbers have been verified by three different types of entities. One of them was the consultant that was hired, uh, that came up with revenue numbers and cost numbers. One of them's Park and Rec, and the other one is the Burlington facility themselves. They're a public entity, they're nonprofit, their tax returns are public. You can look them up. All these cost numbers jibe. It will have a little more revenue than it will have cost. It's gonna provide access to, uh, to all the people in the community that need to have it. And, and kind of rolling back to what you were saying, you want to excel in sports, um, you have to do it year-round. These camps is the poster child of that.
Mm-hmm.
Right now, the only people who can do that have to make fifty thousand bucks a year and have the time to drive up to Bad, Bedendorf and back. If you don't, you can't. So half of our community doesn't make more than fifty thousand. This is the, this is the path to do it.
Mm-hmm.
If I talk much more, you'll, you'll start tuning out.
Thank you.
Any questions?
And this is bigger than the one in Bedendorf, right?
Oh, actually, that's the order-winning point to it. Uh, most of the fields, uh, only came, came forty-eight, fifty-two thousand square feet. Those are eighty-yard fields. This one is a literal a hundred and twenty-yard field. It is college level. If you want to go to college and be on a D-one or D-two team, you gotta play on a hundred and twenty-yard field. Actually, anyone over the age of eight, grade of eight, plays on a hundred and twenty-yard field. None of those other fields, until you get to Des Moines, are of that size. So this makes you better than Burlington and T B K. For tens of the cost, it's four million dollars turnkey. Any other?
Thank you.
Thank you. Megan?
Good evening. My name is Megan Custis. I'm the community grant writer. I'd just add, like Carol said, um, I've been working on two applications for this facility that would contribute to the funds. Um, and I'll submit those and continue working after tonight's conversation if it's approved. So that's just kind of a little status report from me, but the applications seem competitive, and I've enjoyed creating them so far. It's a really exciting project. Awesome.
Well, I thank everybody for their hard work in this. I mean, definitely takes a community to make this happen, so well done, Community Foundation and the private entities and public as well. Well done. Any other comments? Councilmember Osborne?
I'd just like to thank everyone that's brought this forward. I mean, it's been a long road. There's been people championing this for a long time, and to at least get this far is just nice to see you, good to see.
All right, counsel. So does the City Council endorse the concept plan and the use of six hundred thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-four bond proceeds for design and construction of the indoor sports complex?
So moved Gordon. Second, Lewis.
All right. Well, I guess it's, I guess I'll just ask this. I was looking at this. This is different from in-depth. I apologize. All right. Is there a motion to approve this request estimated? I apologize. I'm just like, this is great.
The ball is in your court, mayor.
So moved Gordon. Second, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon, a second by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion, additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next is closed session, is request to enter closed session, closed session per Iowa Code Section twenty-one-point-five-point-one-point-C to discuss strategy with council and matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, and where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in the litigation in accordance with Iowa Code Section six-two-two-point-one-zero, to discuss attorney-client privilege and attorney-work-product matters with legal counsel. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session?
So moved Freilich.
We have a motion by Councilmember Freilich.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Brockert. We'll do a roll call. Councilmember Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.
All right, we'll take five minutes.